So I want to welcome everybody. As you know, this is the tri-board meeting. It is required by the charter. It's a new addition that we must confer. The Board of Finance must confer with the Board of Ed and the Board of Selectmen by October 15th with respect to the budget. So we've got a jet-up that I outlined today. It's fairly open, but that is our topic today to talk about budget planning. So we'll need to stay on topics, those items. Okay? I'm going to call the meeting to order at 7:04 roughly. So welcome everybody. We'll state the pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, veritable, just for all. So just as we did before in our last tri-board meeting, we have asked an independent person to act as moderator. So Ted has agreed to be moderator. And I'm going to go ahead and turn the meeting over to him.
Okay. First thing we did last time, and I'd like to do again, is we just went around the room and introduced ourselves. So if we could start with Eric and work around and then we'll hear from who the public is to ramp up, that'll get us started tonight.
Okay, my name is Eric Anderson and currently I am the town administrator.
Bill DeRoges on the Board of Finance.
Mark Rinker, Chair of the Board of Finance for about one week.
Joanne Hebert, Vice Chair of the Board of Finance for a couple more meetings.
Rob Allen, Board of Finance.
Jed Larson, Moderator and Planning and Zooming Chair.
Jeff McGar for SLIT.
Kimberly for Somp, Board of Finance.
Liz Lowkich, Board of Finance.
Luis Goodwin, Board of Finance.
What's your name?
That's Jacob.
Ladies and Board of Finance too?
In promise.
Yeah, to you, Eric. Do you have a brush and badge or do you please?
Terry Smith, Finance Director for Andover Elementary School.
Valerie Bruno, Superintendent, Andover Elementary School.
Linda Fish, Resident of Andover.
Elaine Bookard, I wear a lot of hats, but right now I'm just recording this meeting.
Bob Hamburger, Thorne and all your sides.
Marcy Minor, Andover President.
Diane Grunier, Concerned Citizen.
Thank you. I just want to point out for the record that I thought Linda said President of Andover, which was the President. So I was saying.
You can have.
I wouldn't want that talking.
You can have. So first item, the first item on the agenda is the public's feet. Anybody in the public like to comment at this point?
Yeah, your friend.
Marcy?
I'm wondering, is this a tri-board meeting? It seems a little shallow. I don't see anyone from the Board of Ed and one person from the Selectmen.
Is there a requirement for a quorum?
This is an odd meeting, so we have a quorum. The Board of Selectmen, Jeff Murray had sat there and said that he was not going to be attending. He sat there and said he had other commitments. Scott Persana is sick tonight, so I did not hear anything from Mayor or Carolyn. So I'm just letting you know. And as far as the Board of Education, I know you're from Caitlin.
Yeah, Caitlin agreed to come, but any of the three nights.
But she couldn't come tonight.
And then something came up and now.
No, she, listen, Caitlin had a birthday party for her son, and Caitlin. But all the rest of the members?
There was only one other member that had planned on being here and they have had a medical, well, maybe two tonight.
Okay, that answers that.
And it's good. Just for procedural purposes, this really is, I think, a Board of Finance meeting, so we have a quorum. I think we can consider that. And we need to hold the meeting per the charter, so.
Any other public comment? Okay, we'll go on to the next item, which is the Board of Finance. Outline and revised budget process and timeline and draft plan.
Now, I guess I need to address that overall, give a summary.
Okay.
Okay. So you have an printed form here. This is also distributed to the Board of Selectmen and the Board of Finance and the Board of Ed. So this is a proposed outline of the budget process and primarily the budget timeline. So starting on October 15th, we're having this tri-board meeting for the charter. This is required. I'm just going to read through this for the record. The week of December 1st, a bunch of worksheets go out to the department heads, chairs, outside agencies, with the target of returning those worksheets within the town. This is the town budget primarily. Return those completed worksheets to the town administrator's office. Okay? Some details there. The town administrator will distribute the draft budget workbook for the general and capital budgets ready for the Board of Finance and Board of Selectmen by February 2nd. The date here stated is the Board of Education to submit its budget to the Board of Finance. So there's a note here that this is required. I think it's the term, you know, in terms of charter, I noticed that it falls on a Sunday this year often because it says X amount of days before, before the end of the year, fiscal year. February, March, starting Wednesday, February 4th, meeting weekly. This gives the Board of Selectmen, Board of Finance, several working meetings before the April 1st public hearing. So we need to, we hold a series of informational meetings. March 18th for Board of Finance, so that we'll vote by then to send the meeting to schedule the public hearing. We've got the public hearing scheduled for April 1st. That's ten edited, but it's a good target date, given the time constraints for the annual town budget meeting. And per the charter, the annual meeting must be the second week of April, between April 7th and April 11th. I think that's actually April 6th through April 10th, if you go Monday through Friday. So I think these dates are actually incorrect.
Then it's 6th through the 10th.
6th through, yeah. So yeah, this is, again, informal, but we put this in there. And then with the target of the townwide budget referendum and the RAM referendum on May 26th. I'll just note here that I did get a request from Caitlin, the Board of Ed Chair, that the Wednesday, April 8th does conflict with the Board of Ed meeting and she wanted to be able to move it. So that would certainly be under consideration. I think if, traditionally, we've had it on Tuesday or Wednesday, or Tuesdays, we kind of kept their mind. What we did have last week, last year, is anything coincided with the Board of Ed meeting, of course, which showed some scheduling issues. So this is a proposed schedule. In general, we need to follow this outline pretty closely. A lot of these dates are prescribed by the charter, at least in terms of the number of days we must complete them by in advance of the town meeting. And if this will be around.
Yeah? I had a thought, okay, just to interject, about the first one and then the second, December 1st, the week of December 1st. As many of you know, Eric is leading us. Typically, he would send those out to the department heads, right? The requests for their preliminary budgets. And that's two weeks after he leaves.
Correct. The Finance Department as well, we're at a deadline and Chris Harkley, Per Kelly, will get those out to the department heads on time. Cool. Yep.
We'll make sure that that gets done. And so since you announced it, Eric just turned in his resignation. So I can't tell you how upsetting that is to me and what a loss it is for the community. So I hope everybody understands that, that it's a significant loss to the community that Eric is leaving. Great for Eric because he's going to another rural place and a place he'll enjoy and he's going to get paid a lot more money. So congratulations, Eric, and thank you for helping. Back to your list, the Board of Education, it requires that that be changed, so I recommend that the Board of Finance change it to the 7th of the night. We will make sure that everything gets out on time. We have a Board of Select meeting to sit there and work through Eric's resignation. And one other thing that the Board of Education asked is that they asked for time before the town meeting for specific questions and answers related to their budget. And let everybody understand here, this meeting, the Board of Education is sitting up front with us. This is a town budget, it's everybody. There will not be, and I don't care who sets up the room, the Board of Education will be there. They deserve to be there, they deserve to answer questions, they deserve to deal with the issue. So if it doesn't get done and anyone shows up at that meeting, they have tables. We need to all be up there, that'll be one of us.
Agreed.
So please accommodate the Board of Education on their request. We will meet that meeting, we do it Thursday, Tuesday.
Now, do you have any idea whether you have a preference on 7th or the 9th? It's Tuesday or Thursday, before or after the Board of Ed meeting?
This is April, right?
Yep.
I mean, we don't need the answer right now. We'll probably try to finalize the schedule on our Board of Finance meeting next week.
I would say tonight.
Tonight?
Yes.
Is that understand?
The Thursday?
That is the Thursday.
If you want to check with the board and/or I can send an email to Kate, we can just validate that. We don't have to write it in stone. If we decide on that schedule, we can change it if we need to, but obviously for playing purposes, just to get that out there. Okay.
Any other questions on the budget process and timeline?
I want to just make a statement if I could. Last year was the first year that we put this into play. And a lot of the things that are on here is, you know, it's aggressive compared to what we did in the past as far as having a lot of meetings and having a lot of input. I mean, nothing's going to change. I mean, with all the changes that you've just announced and the changes. Eric, am I correct? Did I hear I joined the Board of Select meeting late? But did Cheryl hand in her resignation too, the treasurer?
She didn't.
Okay. I'm just asking a question. I mean, I think. So she will not be involved in the budget process and putting the spreadsheet together and all of those kinds of things?
She will not. You'll get the initial spreadsheet from Chris Herr Kelly or you'll do it yourself as a Board of Finance. I believe you prefer.
Yeah, I mean, it'll be up to the board, of course. And then I know that there were issues and different Selectmen had said things that they wanted done, you know, since we're talking about the process. It's not for me to say that, you know, just to, you know, a couple mistakes were made and people have preferences of how they want the spreadsheet presented, but it'll just, I'm just putting it out there in a public meeting. It'll be a difficult year with new people on board with the announcement that was just made and, you know, other people handling those things. But it'll be a lot of bias on the ledger, so. Just, this was already hard to me from being on board four years and really liking the timeline we used to have, a little bit pushed back just to have some time to digest it, but. That's all I mean. And then the beginning of meetings are supposed to be kind of collaborative between the Board of Selectmen and the Board of Finance. I know, I think we had one member of the Board of Selectmen, Jeff came to our first meeting, perhaps it was something, or it's just from memory. Is this year the process going to be possibly a little different with having more members present?
I'm going to be attending all of your meetings.
Yeah.
Just like I'm doing with the Board of Education, I'm going to be attending the Board of Finance.
I think that's.
As an ex officio member, not voting, but fully participating.
That's awesome. It helped me to go to all of the meetings so that I heard things from you. And the ladies do too. Kim and Liz are always present. It just helped, right? Didn't it help with the process? Yeah, no, I love that. Thank you.
Okay, next item on the agenda is expectations from the Board of Finance and the other two, potential spending targets.
I guess like I just said, it was pretty straightforward. We did have a vote, this is a non-binding recommendation. Of course, each floor has to come up with their own budget, but it is our proposed expenditure limit that you agree that you not increase the current expenditures more than 1.5% of the current expenditures for the fiscal year 26, 27. So we know that it's fairly aggressive, but you know, that's a reasonable target.
Any questions on that, Eric? Okay, I'm going to move down to item four. Board of Education Superintendent, identify major items that affect future costs in the 26, 27 budget year and affecting the next five years demographic input.
Anyone? So just because I know we want to make sure we stay on topic, I have a few notes here that I'm going to refer to and I did copy them. This isn't anything official. This is just vows notes on the bottom there. But I know that some people are visual learners. And so if I'm referring to something, I wanted you to have that in front of you to be able to refer to, so don't hold me to any stakes during here. It's just, I think I don't know, you're okay. It's just that I know that this is our opportunity to talk about, to talk about things that are drivers. And so while we're all together, while we're all together, I was a little surprised that we were talking about market research for this. There's a few things that I would like us to just be able to talk about together going into this budget season. I've been here six years and I know that sometimes during the course of the budget season, things get a little bit skewed in terms of what real numbers are, what aren't real numbers are. So I tried to really put this together so that I'm SPD to all of the real numbers. So the difficulty is that we, I've been here since 2020. We also, I want to say, we have a, you know, I have it as a town sometimes of making it seem like when we're looking at the budget numbers, we're comparing apples to apples when it comes to the school and when it comes to the town. And I want to show you a few ways that we have to kind of, hopefully, open up a look at that a little differently. So I listed here the Andover elementary budget increases and the town budget increases for the past six years. It helps to explain, I think, a little bit why the school lines up sometimes with very different needs during budget season to accommodate the specific facts surrounding our increase. So the first one, for example, you can see you're at negative 4% in 2020. In 2020, when I got here, there had been a reduction in students. How did they make it through that year? Well, that was the school year where they closed in March due to COVID. So they would have not been able at the end of the year to necessarily accommodate all of their expenditures, but they did close in March. There was a great deal of savings with closing in March. You see the other ones there? There's zero to three to four. You don't have to read the individual ones, two and five. On the town side, there were other needs. There were absolutely other needs. They went from two to one to five to two to a 15% increase and then down two points. So when we're talking about why the school had a really hard time accommodating such a low target, we do have to consider the fact that over the last six years, we've seen over six years, a 12% increase over the course of six years with an average of two then per year. And we have been able to accommodate 26.77% increase on the town side. And so because of that, I think there's a lot of things, expenditures, that have been considered on the school's side. You look at numbers here on the bottom solely because I believe that during budget season, oftentimes we do have some residents that will say the school is overfunded. The school is overfunded. And I want to be able to make sure that people understand that that is a little bit of a misnomer. I'm going to show you three other things in here. It shows you from 2019 to 2025, there has been over the course of those six years, $500,000 increase to the school's budget. On the town side, the increase has been $886,000. So we do recognize as a town, very often times, that the needs are not the same from one side to the other. So we do, we do do that on a regular basis. On the next page, I have minimum budget requirement. And I would like the Board of Finance to be able to speak to that this year when we go into our town meeting. If you don't know what minimum budget requirement is, and I know a lot of you do, but some people don't, minimum budget requirement is the state's ED 12. And it takes into consideration the average school, this been effects since the 1970s. It says, a landslide town has a loss of a school, you close a school, or you have a significant decrease in the number of students. It requires local municipalities to, at the very minimum, at the very bare bones minimum, keep your budget the same. And we haven't talked about that a lot. And so as we go into budget season, if we could talk about that, that at least is always off the table then, and we wouldn't have people misinformed. I've put in some, into my notes here, you know, just some ways that people could look that up if they want to, but minimum budget requirement, it does. Probably have municipalities budgeting less for local Board of Education than it did the year before. So that's like always the starting point then for a town. The only change can be if we had like a significant loss of students. So if you look at the bottom of our MBR here, that's here for 2023, you'll see a negative 15.9 reduction of residents and that is to the 712. So on the top, we're looking at two different budgets, 2.3, I mean, 4.2 and 4.3 for a total of 8.5. They look at K-12. So our ED 12 is a combination of our budget and RAM's budget. And it looks at only Andover residents for this ED 12. And so because RAM had a loss of students, on the bottom, they say, okay, we're recognizing the loss of 16.9 students and therefore that budget would be able, would be able to be reduced for that minimum. And you were in compliance, everything was fine. But I point this out so that going into a budget season, we have increased by, you know, 40 kids over the years. And so the MBR every year does go up anyways by a certain amount. If the MBR is not taken into consideration and a town passes a budget that does not meet MBR, there could be a loss of ECS dollars. And ECS dollars, which again, is not necessarily something that we talk about. It is in the audit, I know that. It is in the revenue source and sometimes we do say ECS dollars, but that's $2 million that comes into the town for educational purposes. And I put this in here because I do know that the Board of Finance, a couple of years ago and last year, rattle with whether or not that money was going to be the same amount in planning. And both myself and Eric had mixed messages given to us as a superintendent and town administrator about whether it was going to be held harmless, but it is held harmless. So this year and next year, thankfully, it'll stay at that 2.004 million. So we can keep that in mind. Now, I did reference an article in here, not for any other reason, not to say, I can't believe somebody said that, but I put it in here because I wanted to point out that these things at a town meeting aren't legal to go rest. So I would ask that whoever the chairperson is, Mark just said it won't be him at the meeting. Bless you. Um, when we make the statement at the beginning from the charter that says a reminder that you can't add to at that town meeting, we always remind residents, you can't add to it, but you can vote to decrease a budget. I really think that it's important so that we don't have people riled up that we point out to them that the school's budget, there is a bottom point to that. You can't go below what it was last year. So that a resident doesn't make a claim or make a motion for something that could get us in trouble. Because that would have gotten us in trouble had that one gone through. We would have had a legal issue with not meeting MBR. And then we could have had a loss of ECS dollars. So I do think that that's important for us to add that in there. I also would ask the Board of Finance and the Board of Selectmen because you guys are meeting together, to also consider the fact that that number that we put on the ED 12 is what we say we spent on educational dollars. So when there's money that's been returned these last couple of years from RAM, if it gets put back into the general fund, you do need to be cognizant of the fact then that we haven't spent what we said we spent on ED 12. If those dollars are no longer educational dollars, they'll go back into the general fund and not spend on education. Because if that happens, we also could wind up in a situation at the town where we're saying we've spent enough education and we haven't. So those are, those are things there. Now, if you looked at MBR too, and this was important, I pointed out our number of $500,000 on the front on purpose because the formula they use here for ECS, if you notice on the next page, this page that says on the top, the basic ECS formula.
Which page, Joanne?
Right here. Yep. The very minimum that they use, and we all know that especially small towns, there come people spending usually about $20,000, but.
Hang on a second.
Right there, right there. You got it. In a paragraph, there was.
Yep.
The very minimum that they will use at a state level is at 11.5. So I pointed this out because our numbers have gone up in the past six years by K-6 because they only do K-12, has nothing to do with pre-K. K-6, our numbers have gone up, 40 kids. So the state would have adjusted our MBR, they would have used that 11.5 formula and they would have adjusted us $461,000. So our number on the front page that I gave you there of, we've gone up $500,000 in six years, is very much aligned to what the state would have said over these past six years is the minimum, minimum requirement. So we're not far off. And I love us to be on the same page when it comes to informing the taxpayers that in fact, that is very closely aligned to what they would have said at the state with MBR. If you went up 40 kids, we would look at that at about $461,000. So with that said, still going through my notes here, sorry.
Can I add a question? That's K through six, right?
Yes, the state of, yes. We've had 80 new kids, majority of which are K-6.
So your increase, wait, your increase is 40 children over how many years?
Six years. Forty K-6 kids, forty K-6, what's your lead kids total, Jeff?
That's right.
But K-12 is all the MBR looks at.
Okay. Because I, I mean, I came to your meeting the last day and I actually did the analysis and went back to your records that you actually post online for your, and you only increased K through six by five students over these three years. But that's all you post on your website is just the last three years.
No, I have, I'll show you right here.
And take the pre-K off.
No, we're here, so I promise.
Okay.
So can I just say, you said 40 kids from what year? So the 2020, 2021 year or?
The, I arrived in 2020, so I have the numbers in here.
Okay, you're saying 2019, 2020.
Yeah, I, yeah.
Okay. I just want to make sure we're looking at the same.
There's an older report pages.
Yeah, it's in here, yeah. So the other factors that are really important that I want us to consider on the next page is insurance. I have been disappointed that the insurance consortium, which the town itself is signed up for, our insurance consortium has nothing to do with Val or L or the school. Before I was arrived, the town of Andover was part of the consortium. It's a great consortium and it is Hebron and the town of the school, Andover, the town of the school, Marlboro, the town of the school, HM and RAM. It's those entities. I didn't ask to be a part of it. We have to be a part of it. The town has signed us up for this. So it's not a situation where the school can look elsewhere for insurance. We must be a part of the consortium. So I feel very strongly that as a town then, we're requiring my budget to be part of that, that we do need some support for that. And this year is a tough year. I have been to all 70 meetings since I've been here in six years and I've been a little disappointed that only one time have we had representation and I've asked for representation because it's a tough situation to go through. And I've asked for representation because it's a tough situation to go through all those numbers. And it's very important for a finance because if you look at my seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars in insurance, and Eric's insurance and Ram's insurance, this is twelve percent of the whole town's budget. Okay? It's like one point two million with what we pay for, uh, the school, for the town and our portion toward the levy at Ram.
Can you put eyes on health insurance, all the school benefits, right?
Health insurance, yeah. So, uh, health identity, yeah.
And now I have one question since you brought it up. And I understand districts and towns will shop around time to time. I understand however the town is locked in and the school's part of that.
Yes.
Is there a number of years that it, if it's that big of a thing? Um, I mean, it's, I know the town.
The thing is, is the insurance consortium itself, we have like said, eight entities that vote. And the thing is, is that as a unit, just like Board of Finance, or it's like your Board of Ed, as a unit, we vote. And so if at some point we need to go elsewhere and look for something else as a self-insured consortium, we can do that. But it requires all of us at our monthly meetings to be able to do that. And we have shopped for certain things, for stock loss insurance, we've studied, you know, shopped over the years for things. Um, in some years, we fare very well, and we come in low, in other years, we come in high. It depends on how many of the members of the consortium are, are high.
And that's like, if it gets to ridiculous, and you know, like you have, you've given us a good overview of it. I definitely dove into insurance during, you know, the budget season this year because I thought that what we saw was a lot. And I ought to take over your portion.
That's okay.
So I'm just saying, you know, so that the town has, say it's out of control as it is for everyone. They can't go elsewhere.
Well, so we have two votes.
But you have to vote with the town, the Board of Ed.
No, well, well, we, we have two votes. So Ram, because of the number of people that are insured, gets two votes. And then Hebron Town of Board of Ed, Andover Town of Board of Ed, Marlboro Town of Board of Ed and HM. I think I might have forgotten their vote for. So those are the votes. And we have a great, I mean, we have a great consortium, but I would love to have somebody from the town there at our monthly meetings because this is a lot of money, let me say.
To have a vote, yeah.
Twelve percent, otherwise I'm the only vote, and I've been the only vote, you know, for a very, very long time. So, um, that's important to me because I, I think that when we come to you guys then, people don't understand, I cannot change that number in our budget. We are tied to that consortium. So, um, ABS, uh, we have seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Um, and we have about four times the number of employees on the insurance as the town hall does. There's seven or eight there?
Over town's insurance?
Eight, eight of them, eight people.
Well, I think less than that actually.
Yes.
Because we.
Yes.
We incentivize the hell out of people not to take the town's insurance. So we have, I think currently, either four or five people that take fee and look instead of the insurance.
So, yeah, so when you're considering a one point five starting point, understand that I put the numbers here. For me, we had a meeting this past week, and we were told that we can anticipate sixteen and a half percent increase this year for the consortium. Yes, I about died. I thought, oh my goodness. I have four times the number of people on the insurance. And so the issue with that then for the school's budget is if you take seven hundred and fifty thousand and you add sixteen and a half percent to that, we're looking at a two point five percent increase to our budget with nothing else different except to cover our insurance. On the town side, you'd be looking at a point zero four percent increase. So that's huge. That's apples to oranges, it's no comparison. You know, the town could easily, easily, not that they want to, but the town side could easily eat point zero four percent in a budget. And we can't. So that's difficult. Likewise, the largest part of any school's budget has to do with our human capital, has to do with our people. We have a lot more employees. Again, there are seven full-time employees on the town side. We have a lot more than that. Uh, but we have, you know, again, that's the largest portion of our budget. We're talking about, you know, five times the number of people that are there, that are employees. So again, if we look at this with an average pay increase of three percent, contractual obligation to the size of the school would be one point five percent right there. So we are already talking about one point five percent for contractual obligations and salaries and two and a half percent if that insurance premium goes up to sixteen point five percent. And again, we have no control over the insurance. I can't look elsewhere. Wish we could, but we couldn't. So I also do know that once Terry and I sit in, and we've only started to do this because of October, which is earlier, but when we look at some of the changes, we've had a lot of teachers have babies and get married, which is all wonderful news. But of course, when that happens, we look at the insurance and say, okay, they just went the same to a family plan. So when we do that, we consider the increases that we know about. We also know that we're looking at a total then of five percent right there for just those two things, for the contracts and the insurance. So we also did say last year, everybody knows, we've been saying it all year, that we will need that sixth grade teacher this year. Um, and so we definitely said that last year. So when you add those things in, we are looking, and that's nothing else, because we've just begun this process. As you guys know, it's October, so we don't have numbers and things. It's not apples to apples. So this is, this is big for us. You know, it's, it's, it's difficult, I understand that. But I think when we look at the combination of the three budgets, ours, our means, our expenditures do have to be looked at and looked differently. And the last thing, you know, my notes here for, as we said, we wanted to look at things and the projection for this next year costs is that our budget, our operational budget is one hundred percent expenditure. So we do a budget, and we know that from day one to the last day of the budget season, that money's going to be money in and money out. It's all on expenditures, that's where our budget's based on. We don't have any funds. So there's no savings funds or things like that. So to cut, you're actually cutting a bill that you know that you're already going to receive. Where we are different from the town because it's abuzzed orange, I'm not saying they're the same, is about seventy, seventy-five percent of a town budget, when you're considering what their needs are, about seventy, seventy-five percent of the budget is expenditures. Things that you know for one hundred percent sure are going to be expended during the course of that year. That's where they're different than us. And then about a quarter of their budget is funds. It's, it's those savings accounts for projects for later on, which makes sense for a town. But I'm just saying, that's where we're not the same. So when someone says you've got to cut a, a one percent, sure, it hurts, but you're cutting it from something that is not one hundred percent sure already in expenditure during the course of that year. So that's where we're very different. So in considering those things, I know there will be a few questions on this last page too. On the last page, this is available obviously every month, um, at our board meeting. This is the October first, uh, enrollment. So this will back up our MBR. This will back up the fact that we are moving forward in terms of size. This does show you that sixth grade need currently in October. And it does show you, and I circled October only because when the state looks at enrollment, they look at October first. So that's why I, um, circled October. And you can see it was one seventy-five back in twenty twenty. Um, and it's two hundred and forty-seven now. If you minus the pre-K on the top for MBR purposes, on the right, you'll see that's a hundred and eighty-six K sixers. Ram has a hundred and twenty-eight seven twelveers. So, yep, we were up seventy-two kids by October of this year, uh, in the six-year span, forty are K sixers. And so that misnomer, that we are way overfunded, I hope you look at the MBR. I hope you also consider the ECS dollars. I hope that you consider the fact that there are some of these variables that I can't control like insurance. And I do want people to see that when you look at the K six budget moving forward on the bottom there, that if you take our budget and you divide it by our number of kids, we're like seven thousand less than Ram. So again, um, the question on here was looking at future costs. Those are our future costs, the salaries, the insurance. Um, a lot of things that, that we don't even have on here yet. But for us to start off in something one point five that doesn't even cover a lot of those other things, I think that these are things that I hope that the Board, uh, of Finance is like, will consider. And Shannon, if we have anything to add.
No, I just, uh, great presentation. I was going to get at exactly what we got out of the second to last page, which is I was a part of the contract negotiations, um, for all of the, the two different certified and non-certified. Um, we have an average for both of them, which frankly, just barely meets cost of living adjustment with all that's going on of about three percent per year. So if you take both of those into account, um, it's three percent across the board among basically all of our employees. That's before we get out of the gate and add in the insurance. So when I heard one point five, I, I knew that was just, uh, wholly unreasonable as far as our ability to meet that goal. Um, we can't do it based on our contractual obligations as much as we would like to.
Can I ask a question? So you got this sheet, right? This is your student enrollment, right? So in twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one, the one seventy-five, there was no pre-K at that point in time, right?
Yes, there was, there was.
There was pre-K, you don't remember?
Um, there, when I arrived, we had, um, two classrooms. Um, they weren't completely full, but we had two classrooms.
Okay, can you get us that number?
Sure.
Because that would be helpful because if I take the pre-K out of your current number, I only get eleven student majors.
What, I'm sorry, what do you mean?
So I use two forty-seven because if I remember correctly, in future, previous conversations, you had always told us the pre-K would be self, self-funding and self-supporting with grant funding and tuition. And I don't remember it being in place back in twenty twenty-one, so that's five, six years ago. Because I only remember.
Pre-K?
Yep.
Oh, yes, pre-K's been there since twenty sixteen or something.
Sorry, so my, my bad. I, so I would, I'd like to know the number on the one seventy-five because then that would tell me what to add to the eleven.
Um, I, I will make sure that during our budget season, that number, that, that chart that's on the top that shows you by grade.
Yep.
Will be a part of every single one of our presentations.
And then one last question then Shannon, if you could, and you went on, we get to the next Board of Education. You only have three years of minutes. Um, and I know that the Board of Ed keeps the minutes at the school. Can you sit there and bring up maybe that they should be kept, the town hall and the town clerk's office when you fill up? So that if people want to go backwards and look at minutes and see what happened in previous board meetings, that it's available because we cannot go over to the school and get that information. And the only thing I see on my list three, sir.
Information is that.
Excuse me?
The information's available at the school.
At the school, but you can't go over there during the middle of the day.
We're responsible, we are responsible, um, if you look up any of the state statutes in terms of records, we are responsible to keep those records for a certain amount of time and we're to keep them there. So if you want your person to make copies of anything, I'm more than happy to open up whatever they need to to make copies. But our, our records are, are kept there.
No, I, I do understand that. And I do understand that other boards will sit there and, you know, you have a book and a binder, and they're online. If they were all online, this would not be an issue, but they're not all online.
Well, where we're different, Jeff, is that in a larger town, there's a central office.
Yep.
And a central office for schools, it's always kept there. Unfortunately, I am central office, so they're kept where my office is. So again, I'm really not trying to be challenging, but if anybody needs anything copied, they can come and take them from where I would be considered central office.
It, it, it would just be easier, it would be easier if there was a separate copy in the town clerk's office.
Again, the town clerk, if we're in, if the town clerk would like to copy them, I'm, I'm, I'm minimal to that, I am.
Okay.
Our, our sustain of us, thank you.
If we were to ask for them via email, would we receive them like in a PDF packet?
Sure.
Okay.
Um, tell us which one you need, I absolutely will get them for you.
Okay.
I have a question. Um, you mentioned, are you expecting to hire, expecting to hire another teacher for sixth grade now?
For next year, for the budget for next year.
So right now, it was like.
Twenty-eight children right now.
Well, there's twenty-five children in sixth grade, or in fifth grade. Yeah.
Yes.
There's twenty-five children in fifth grade, so that would be next year, there would be twenty-five.
Yes. Because right now, I, 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 I was looking at the, the kernel enrollment. Um, because right now, yes, fourth and fifth grade, we did separate them. And, um, we, that's our intent is to keep them separated moving forward.
Wait, I don't understand.
To keep two, to, to keep two, because once you merge the back, you're looking at twenty-five to twenty-eight or twenty-nine kids, we find that with this group of fourth, fifth and sixth grade kids and the needs, that it's, it's, it's a necessity for us.
It's a necessity to have twenty-five children separated into two classes, like grade six, when they could be moving on to a big high school?
This particular group of children, yes. We would have done it last year, but we didn't need to do it with this group of sixth graders with the use of intervention. So, um, keep in mind, I do have a track record here in the past six years of not only saving money by combining classes when the group of children allowed us to do that. They didn't have a lot of means, if you remember correctly. Um, I had two years of a two-three combination rather than adding an additional class because with those children, we could do that. It wasn't the most ideal situation, but we made it work. We had a combination for two years. Um, last year, with the sixth grade, I was there, and the fifth grade last year, we did have larger classes, um, last year. So for some students, it works. I do have, I think, a good history of making sure that we meet the needs of all the kids. And sometimes having twenty-eight kids in a class is not an issue. Um, I'm not a proponent, a proponent of saying that class sizes have to be very small. Um, I, I don't believe that. Sometimes they are too small when you get, uh, you know, to the weeds of things. But I do believe that we are ready to have that setting class nature for those kids and their needs.
It's like the, for the grade behind it, it's about thirty-six.
Right, right. So if we, if, you're right, Robert, we'd be kicking the can for one more year at the expense of the needs of these kids going into sixth grade. Um, and, and we know, Robert, that separating them, for anybody who watched Taylor's presentation, uh, the board meeting, and, you know, I urge you during the course of this year to watch more of her presentations. Um, we have already seen in the first two months of school, a difference having those two fifth grade classes. We've seen, we do the beginning of the year benchmarks, the middle of the year benchmarks, the end of the year benchmarks. Those teachers have already seen a difference with us having those classes at a more reasonable size. They're thriving as opposed to last year. So.
My sister's great last year.
So you know.
I have stories from her.
How old is your, what grade is your?
She's in seventh, she started red.
Yeah.
But, um, she has some things to say about her class and her gap.
Yeah, yeah. So, so yes, so and again, I, like I said, I do have a track record of saving money when we can, if it was something that we could do in merging classes. Um, trust me, it wasn't popular with parents when we had to take the two-three combo, and we did it for two years. I think, Robert, you had one that was, was there at the time as well.
Yeah, thank you.
And it wasn't their first choice, but I did explain to them, you know, how we were going to meet the needs of the kids and the fact we did it for two years. Um, and it was appropriate to do it during those two years, um, instead of asking for another class. Um, so, you know, I, I do stand by that. Sometimes, sure, um, you know, twenty-five or twenty-eight kids in a class is appropriate. It just isn't with these upper grades right now.
Working in a school too, we need to know it's not just teaching the kids and preparing the material every day. I mean, I personally think eleven is too small because you want socialization and that. But the phone calls you get from the parents, the, the follow-up, the meetings, everything you have to prepare for, for each individual student, I would never believe anything over twenty. I mean, I think twenty-five is rarely pushing it. That's just from being in a school, taking all the phone calls, nobody let these teachers have to prepare each and every day. It's a lot. So if I got two minutes there. So, yeah, anything in the twenty, oh, over twenty for a teacher, I don't know how we do it, but.
And, and, and Joanne.
Maybe there are, you know, like you said, a group that don't have a lot of needs or individuals or parents that are calling every other day that want to talk to the principal about what the teacher's doing. There's that aspect that we do need to bring into it too, just from my experience of working in a school system.
But to that point, Joanne, if you look, I know it might be difficult this year for us to say, okay, we're going to support the school and we're going to do that. We're going to, as a group, say, that's what we have to do is bite the bullet. But if you look then at this enrollment, we'll have taken that hit to go back to the two in every grade. But then if you look at the numbers, it'll be a very long time unless we build huge products in Andover. It'd be a very long time before we would ever have to visit, revisit, I should say, adding a third class someplace. Where years ago, there were three classes to grades when the numbers were high in Andover. And if you look here, you'll see that that's not something that would probably be in any of our lifetimes in looking at the budget. We would have done that work, and we would have gotten to that point, and we would have the sufficient number of classrooms for K six. And we'll be okay then, you'll see that. There's a lot of room to grow then after that. So we'll be okay, we'll be looking at that the following year or years after that, so.
So if we go through this list, could you, could you just tell us, so I can write next to the, the grades, pre-K, how many teachers are there?
There's four classrooms, so there's four teachers. That's not our biggest budget, that's, that's not our biggest budget, we're doing the second to last hour.
So there's, there's one fourth grade class?
No. No, there's four teachers.
No, there's two.
Two, fourth grade classes, eighteen each. Oh, I see where you're at. And so each one of these, so there's four teachers on the first line, and then two teachers in each one of the other grades, so it's like six.
Correct, and you know what, I will correct, I see down there, Rose Mearne never corrected this, and, and I've never noticed it, so that's my bad too. Fourth and fifth, she never corrected that, she's second to last line, right. Because she's only the second one for the school year, so, but yes, there are two there.
Yeah, so it's two, 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 and one in sixth grade.
Correct.
And your goal is to have two in sixth grade next year?
Yes.
And keep two teachers in all the other grades?
Correct.
Okay.
Jeff, if I'm correct, and I'm, I don't know that I am, which the exact figures, when we first started pre-K, and I don't know what it was by the time of twenty twenty or so, we had approximately twenty kids in it. Each classroom had, you know, less than ten when we first started. We did have, I don't know if we went one immediately to two, but we had only two classrooms by the time Val arrived in twenty twenty. So if we take that, and it's twenty to twenty-five students in pre-K right now, I mean, and we take out the sixty students now, we've had an increase of thirty, thirty-five to forty students, so not the eleven we're talking about.
I'm not, listen, I'm not debating the number that Valerie told us of forty, I'm just trying to get to the number, trying to get to the number.
I was trying to tell you my own.
Like, we can come and look at this Shannon, and go in twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four, we only had two hundred and six students. And the next year, we had two hundred and forty, and that entire increase, that entire increase was pre-K?
No, because follow Jeff, follow that two oh six in October
Yeah.
down to June
Yeah.
on, on that sheet.
Yeah.
I circled October, because the number that we have to report to the state is an October first number. But if you look from August to June, every year, we had kids come mid-year.
Correct, and I understand that, and I can live with two nineteen, but the difference between two nineteen and the two forty was all pre-K. You had a huge jump in pre-K.
That was when we opened the fourth class.
And you opened up, and you did all the cardinal issue, and all that stuff.
So that's why they're minus from my one eighty-six on the top.
And that's what we, we have to look at.
Any other questions?
Any other questions on the school budget?
I have one, your, your sister in class, so we want to split them off. Are any, is there a parent in that class right now?
There is not. What we do instead is, there are academic subjects where the team splits. So the fourth, fifth and sixth grade is in, uh, fifth and sixth grade is in one week. And there is a fourth classroom that is used for Spanish, and when it's not used for Spanish, it is used to work with other smaller groups. So this is where we've been able to put a band-aid on this for this year, is, for example, when they do math. When they do math, there are students that are at one need level, there are students at another need level, and we have the math interventionist that will work with students in one room, and the classroom teacher will work with students in the other. So we're able to, right now, split groups for certain content areas to work in smaller groups, because a lot of those students have those individualized needs anyways, but it's not ideal. And like I said, this is the year that we are also looking at those students that now in the fourth and fifth grade have been split, thanks to the fact that we got the new fourth and fifth grade teachers there, and we're seeing them thrive. And so that's going to continue through, through next year.
So if the class is split, are you planning on hiring pairs for the class to split? When you split the sixth grade class?
We don't hire paraprofessionals, our school does not have paraprofessionals. We don't have regular ed pairs
Okay.
in our school. All of our paraprofessionals in our school, and we, you know, we, we have a very small percentage of pairs in comparison to a lot of neighboring towns. All of our pairs are hired for a specific need. Maybe it's one child that they're hired to work with, maybe it's to accommodate a few children that have a particular need written into an IP or a five oh four, so they might work with different students during the course of the day. But we don't have our building any parent that is there just as a regular education parent to work in a room, because the teacher has a lot of kids.
So you now have, okay, so the, but the preschool has, they have four pairs.
They do, and that's not in the general budget, that's in the tuition, but that's because the law requires that when you have a certain number of students in a pre-K room, you must have the paraprofessional.
Okay, got that.
Yeah.
But you hired extra pairs this year, I think, how many do you have now in the school? Just out of curiosity, from the six pairs in the K through six?
In K through six, I believe, yes, there are six.
And you're saying that each of those are?
Have assignments related to children, yes. Yes. That's why the need for the second sixth grade class coming up. If there is a five oh four student, or if there is an IP student, their document says what is required for support. And so, yes, those six paraprofessionals.
Are basically assigned to one student.
Not necessarily one student, they said they're assigned to students that have identified needs.
They might have identified needs for maybe certain subjects, or?
So, so if you were a parent, Liz, you may be working in one classroom with one student in the morning, because it's the math time. And that particular student requires support in math for their IP. But then in the afternoon, you might be assigned to another student in another grade completely someplace else, or that classroom has two or three students in it that say they need support during reading. So it's not necessarily you have one student, but maybe there's three in that grade, and you're assigned in the afternoon to go in and work with the teacher, because there's three students that are identified. So, you know, it, it is, I'm a former special ed director, so.
Part of the special ed process.
Right.
And the P stands for individualized education. Educational plan, right, so, yeah. And then they're within the dossier, and so they have. No, I know you understand that.
Yeah, I, I never remember.
Educating block now, I would like to move on to the next section, and if we have time at the end, we can come back and have more questions.
Yeah, okay.
The next up then is Board of Selectmen and Town Administrator, identify major items, and we'll ask you Drew Bossman on my six, twenty-seven budget year and projecting the next five years.
Eric, if you want to take it, since you're still getting paid, or it's not right? Sure. So a couple things that are looming, one, we're notified that the Northeast Cog is no longer going to provide animal control services again. That's a little annoying. The reason why this is critical is we're gonna have to find another town that's willing to take us on this shared service. And the, the reason why we don't just take it back internally is that our animal control holding facility is so far out of date that we would be looking at building a standalone building. Animal control facilities are required to be air-conditioned.
I'm sure that.
And there is an expectation from the state that if there's not a full-time monitor there, there's at least a part-time staff person assigned to the animal control facility. And given the number of animals that we take care of on a yearly basis, that's a crazy, you know, there's no way we're gonna devote one person, you know, have a part-time employee down there every day, because most of the days, there's no dogs there. So that's, that's something that we're gonna have to deal with as a shared service. As of July one of this year, the new AFME contract will be, we will have a new, well, I'm not saying we'll have a new AFME contract, because usually we don't end up negotiating them until well after the year, because it doesn't bother to negotiate with us for that few employees. But there will be a new AFME contract effective July one of this year.
Or twenty-six.
Correct. So in terms of other things, overall, fuel and electricity, both do not seem like we're going to see major spikes in them. On the electrical front, the legislature has been hammering away at, at the utility company, which is kind of ironic, because it was mostly the legislature forcing them to do energy efficiency product, projects, and accept a certain fraction of nuclear power and other things, which drove the rates up in the first place. Not that I don't agree with the intent of what they were doing, because I do, but it did have a big effect on the consumers, and they're backing off a lot of that now. So I think that should, over the next couple of years, stabilize our electrical costs, hopefully. If anything, they should be decreasing slightly. Fuel costs obviously are very volatile. You know, we, by switching to propane, we've reduced the overall cost of fuel for the town hall relatively considerably. And the town hall now has the capability to be heated and cooled, both with ductless split AC systems and with a propane boiler, at least on the heating end. And we did that, because that hedges our bets on fuel costs. The propane's running really high, we can lose mostly ductless splits. If propane, you know, stays relatively low, it's more efficient to run off the boiler in the winter. So I anticipate our costs for energy are gonna be pretty stable. So from the town's perspective, the biggest real concern is capital projects, because that's, that's essentially what the biggest variability is in our funding. The two biggest dollar value projects that we have going are Bunker Hill Bridge, which is about seventy-five percent complete at this point, and the bridge at Long Hill Road, which will start next April. Both of those are fully funded, between federal dollars and state dollars, and money from the Investment and Jobs Act, which is federal. So those, those are in pretty good shape. We did delay the replacement of the Culver slash bridge on Lake Road at the Sola. And hopefully, we can make it another year without a significant failure of that structure. You know, and while that is completely gone, it very definitely does need to be replaced, but the engineer seems to think we can drive over it another year without having a catastrophic collapse, so that's what we're doing.
I have to keep that in mind while I have.
I was gonna say. I was not driving around here, anyone?
That's an other million dollar project for us, right? It's a fifty-fifty grant.
Yeah, so that's a fifty-fifty state-funded project. We have been putting money away in the Brighton Culver Fund annually. And as you noted in twenty twenty-three, part of the reason we saw a big increase on the town side is we started increasing the funding for capital projects
Yeah.
to get more of those done. So by the time we do the bridge in twenty twenty-seven, at current funding levels, it won't be an increase in funding. You know, but we'll have to keep money into it at that point. Hopefully, in about a year and a half, when we're substantially completed with the Long Hill Bridge, the money that we're currently using in that fund can then be rolled into the next Culver project. And to put it in perspective, there are still six more Culverts that are rated poor or failing in the town of Anover, and most of those are between a half million and a million and a half dollars projects. So we are just simply addressing them at the rate at which the public is willing to give us funding and hoping to stay ahead of catastrophic failure. The only one that's really failed completely is the one on Hutchinson. As many of you know, that's been necked down to one lane, because the bulk lanes are not safe anymore. So we've nept that down to a one-lane road. And it only affects a few residents. So that's really been the push on the town side. And the bulk of the increase in spending on the town side has been, been capital funding. Can that be trimmed? It can, but it just slows down the rate. You know, and for the most part, all of our goals have been to stay ahead of major failure events. We have had some really good successes. We, starting in around twenty twenty, we consider we upped the annual budget every year for tree trimming. We've also been incredibly successful with getting Eversource to collaborate with us on Roots in Town. So if you look at it, over a five-year period, we put in about two hundred and fifty thousand dollars into tree trimming, and we got Eversource to contribute around four hundred thousand dollars to our tree trimming in town. And as most of you've noticed over the last few years, we've had very little storm-related damage in the town. And I've always judged that we have thirty-four miles of road. The rail trail runs through, you know, we have five and a half miles of rail trail. And most storms today, we're getting twice as many trees down on the rail trail as we're getting on the whole rest of our trail network, or our whole road network. So we've been very successful with that. The other thing frankly that the town faces, which everybody faces, is the cost increases in equipment. When I look back in two thousand, in nineteen, we bought a plow truck for around a hundred and ninety-three thousand dollars. The one that was purchased before that was a hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars. The one we bought after that was two hundred and sixty thousand dollars, and a plow truck today is, you know, well over three hundred. In fact, the last vehicle we got, we stopped by Peterbilt, which were better vehicle, just simply because the cost basis for buying them was, was too high. So it's on the, you know, the, the capital end, we've kind of held Public Works to a capital budget, and that's been working reasonably well. You know, the, the cost of liquid asphalt has stabilized the last two years. There was a huge spike in, which really drives the cost of paving, but that's leveled off the last couple of years, because that tracks very closely with the cost of oil. So hopefully, that stays fairly stable. The goal is to continue to shim and chip the remaining roads that have not yet been shimmed and chipped. There's about a quarter of the town in that category. Those should all be addressed within, within the next year, basically. So we will have done one cycle of leveling the roads and shimming them. The next big thing we're gonna have to consider doing is, a chip seal is a band-aid. You can only do that so many times, and eventually you have to start, you know, either just repaving or reclaiming and repaving. And that's an expensive proposition. Today, reclaim and repave is about a half million dollars a mile, and we have thirty-four million dollars for thirty-four miles of road. So you can do the math, that's a pretty expensive proposition to do. So at some point, we're gonna have to start switching over to a plan, which is less shim and chip seal and then selective rebuilding roads. You know, we don't have a lot of roads that were built properly from the ground up. We're an old colonial town, so most of these roads were cart paths, you know, that, that never really had a proper surface, so, so that's a part of our issue. We've done an awful lot of work addressing drainage throughout town. You know, we've had some pretty major improvements. The next kind of big project Public Works needs to tackle in terms of roadwork is a, I can't help me. It's the road. Having the brain fart here.
Which way? It's right.
It's the road off of Burnout Block.
The road off.
Ridge Road, not, Ridge Road. Ridge Road. Ridge Road was poorly built. We've looked at the drainage extensively. I think we can. I think we can rebuild part of that road without the. The good news is that the culverts in the road are, you know, are concrete culverts. And the pipes are concrete. It's just that the original design of the road was really poor. We had problems plowing it every year. We break springs on the plow truck every single year plowing that road. So that has to be rebuilt and built correctly. But we're probably, we probably don't have the money right now to do a full reclaim and repave. So what we're gonna do is basically just re-sheet the bad parts and then shim and chip the rest of that. So I think we can live within the existing Public Works roadwork budget. The one thing I would say, I'm not saying we have going for us because it's not an advantage, but because we didn't have a Public Works supervisor for most of the summer, we did not do the second half of roadwork. So we do have, you know, a fair bit of money sitting in that fund. But remember, you know, one mile of reclaiming, one mile of road in Annover would wipe out a year of our roadwork fund. So it doesn't get you a whole heck of a lot. We have several other major capital projects that we are in the works. The first is the improvements at the athletic fields. So we currently have a half million dollar Steve Grant for the pickleball courts, the new playgrounds and a pavilion and lighting for the pickleball courts. We were also able to get a $250,000 legislative appropriation. And we previously allocated money from our multi-use building fund, about $150,000 for that. And we also got a $10,000 Harvard Foundation for Public Giving grant for that. So that project will take up every bit of that money. In fact, we've shifted some of the work back from the contractor to Public Works so we could get it under the allotment that we had for that. So all the money for that project is either state grant funded or it's money that the town has already put in a capital fund. The next real big project on the town's side, other than that, there's two additional projects. The first is the teardown of the old firehouse slash senior center and replacing that with a garage. That project, we do have a Steve Grant to fund a portion of that. Town meeting has already allocated some money from the multi-use building fund. And my suggestion to the boards has been that we use our low SIP state dollars to fill out the rest of that. And if we do that, that will not affect any ongoing taxation. And then there's kind of two more big projects. The first is finishing off the community center, finishing off the basement. And then secondarily, the generator that is located at the fire department. That generator goes back to 1990. So it is in need of replacement. And one of the problems we've had in this building up to this point is although we're ADA compliant when we have power, we're not ADA compliant when we don't have power. Because we don't have the juice to run the elevator here. So the goal is to put in a single generator that runs all three buildings. It runs the community center, it runs this building, and it runs the firehouse at full capacity. That allows us to use the town hall as our emergency operations center, which it is. It allows us to use the community center as an emergency shelter and keep operations going. And it allows the fire department to function. Now currently, we're awaiting word on whether we've gotten a legislative appropriation from the federal government. We've asked for around $300,000 from the federal government and it made it through the Senate Appropriations Committee. But it made it through the Senate Appropriations Committee last year too. And then they didn't fund any appropriations. So politically, it's anybody's guess whether they're going to come to some kind of agreement, pass a project and fund appropriations or not. So if we get that funding, we would use that funding plus an additional $250,000 in state legislative appropriations that we got, that we will have as of July 1 next year. So the good news is the three big projects that we have rolling right now are funded from either town money that taxpayers have already paid into permanent funds or state or federal dollars. So we've been pretty successful with that. And then the last thing that's hanging out there is the multi-use pathway.
Can I, sorry to interrupt you. The whole generator linking the three buildings for that project, how much is the total cost for something like that?
The generator alone is about 300K, something like that. Because it's a very large generator. Now, we've already kind of prepped everything in that when we built the community center, we paid for and timed and put in all the conduit for the electrical. And we ran a gas line through all our buildings. And we have a gas line and we put the extra tube propane tanks. And we have an interlock between us and the fire department. So most of the year, the fire department fills their tanks, we fill our tanks. In an emergency, there's a valve that opens all four tanks. So we have full capacity through the generator and the backup of all the buildings. So we've done all the pre-work and we will have installed the automatic transfer switches in community center and in here. But it's still an expensive project to do.
The funds you said you were taking it from, that's, I'm like, I need to know how successful that is.
Yeah, no, it's, it's no question. And then finish off the basement of the community center. And that's gonna kind of depend to some extent on the Board of Selectmen making final decisions, hopefully in conjunction with the community center staff, as to what exactly they want to program that for. Because how you finish it off is kind of depending on what you're gonna use it for.
And that's in future years, you're giving us an overview of projects, not just this upcoming year, correct?
So if we get the federal legislative funding, I would assume we would go out to bid sometime late May, early June, assuming that we have the state funding sometime after July 1. And that would be a project done following next year, so next budget cycle. And the last thing is the multi-use pathway that connects from here down to the rail trail. So we're a little bit stalled out on the design. We would need to come up with and budget roughly $100,000 to complete that design. We did apply for what's called LOCIP, which is a transportation-based funding from the Department of Transportation that's passed to the Capital Regional Council of Governments. So we have a $2.9 million essentially construction funding that we've already gotten. We've gone through the first rounds of comments with DOT, we've addressed them. We need to send it back and get their final commitment to fund letter. But we already have a preliminary commitment to fund letter. The way those programs work is we are on the hook to do the design and then we can 100% fund the cost of construction. The other good thing about the Capital Regional Council of Governments is that if the price increases, because, you know, we did that, we submitted that a year and a half ago based on the prices at the time, the COT is pretty reasonable about accepting price increases for projects. Like we may get comments back from the DOT and they may require us to do improvements for them from 316, which drive the price up. If that happens, we can go back to the probability expectation that they will increase the budget for that process.
And I remember asking you about that particular project. That's a biggie at our meeting when you presented on our last meeting.
Yep.
That one's in the future because there's so many things that have to happen. And I, I mean, I know this is, you know.
If you're lucky, it'd be a construction.
Probably a three-year holders. I mean, you've liked this and have been into that. But so you said you had $100,000 that would be for the, to finish the design element of it.
Yeah.
Is that the full cost of the design or is that?
No, so.
I don't want to take a risk.
So I secured a $100,000 legislative grant a couple of years ago. And I used that money to do essentially the big picture design, take a pathway and then produce a preliminary design to go for funding. And then I had a bunch of money left over and I applied that money towards the design survey work. So the $100,000, in truth, that's probably closer to $200,000 in design work. But $100,000 of that would have already been a legislative appropriation. There's a second pathway back through here, which I know is going to take cooperation from a lot of entities. We've let out the design contract for that, that also went to town meeting. That's a 20% town match and roughly an 80,000. And I suspect that design will take about a year. And if the town was smart in a year, you would turn around and apply the LOCIP funding. Because you would have a full-blown design. And if you got full-blown, if you got lots of funding, that would be 100% of the construction. So you could theoretically do that without spending a dime of Annover tax dollars, which is usually my objective. So that's what we've got going for projects. So we are spending a fair bit of town money. I'm not gonna deny that. But we're also spending millions in state and federal dollars too. So we're getting an awful lot done for what we're spending. That's it, unless you have other questions you need.
Any other questions for Eric?
Thank you, thank you for all your hard work and getting all those grants and.
We're not done.
I know.
We have other problems with the town that we're gonna have to, at the Board of Finance. Eric Levy leaves a huge hole and we have to determine as to how we're hiring. So the goal will be to draw, get an interim town manager, town administrator. But how we sit there and look at the position moving forward is gonna be different because there's gotta be discussions as to the compensation that is paid on that position. So right now, it's at one level. We may not be able to get a qualified person at that level. We might need to make some adjustments, but that's also something that has to be taken into account. So when you look at next year's budget, you're gonna have potentially an increase at that level. Also, one of the priorities that the Board of Selectmen has is the community center. And it's maximizing the availability of the community center and what benefits are leveled for the seniors and for the rest of the community as far as using that building. I would hope we would come to you guys with some plan as to what we could do to sit there and make better use of that building and, like I said, extend the hours. Because that's really the biggest issue for me, to make as much use of it as possible. Eric's done a great job of getting funding to sit there and finish off the building. So as of right now, our kitchen is not complete because we don't have the hood in place. But we're gonna sit there and work to get that done. Once the kitchen is done, all the lunches can sit there and be dealt with out of that building and it could also be used for rental purposes. So we have the senior center and community center to consider. So those two are the two things from my end. Because reality is, from a town level, we have been very conservative as to how much money we're spending. I don't think anyone can sit there and look at the town level and go, it has increased because we've added additional employees or we've added a significant amount of services. The only thing that has been added from that perspective is one additional person at Public Works, which I think is extremely effective and has gotten more done for the town in the last five to six years than has been done in the past. And then the employees over at the community center. There hasn't been any increase in staffing levels at the town hall and there hasn't been any admissions at the library. So those really are only our two increases from an employee base for the town. Agree or disagree, Eric, from what I'm saying to you?
Yes, so over the last six years, we've basically shifted a series of town hall staff department time. So we've reduced, town hall staffing overall is, you know, significantly lower than it was six years ago. We have added staff to Public Works and we have added staff to the community center.
And so from, from that standpoint, I don't think anyone in the community can sit there and think that we are going to the Board of Finance and asking for any significant level of increase that hasn't been justified as to the service level that you perceive as taxpayers. So if not, I'd really like to know about that. So, but you are, we are going to come, because we are gonna have problems replacing Eric. It will not be an easy situation and it will be financially impactful for the town. And we're all gonna have to get together and understand that if we want to keep moving forward. Because my fear with the community is that, you know, chaos in every organization causes problems. We can see it at every level of government, we can see it in any business. You have chaos in your organization, you cause problems. We've had a slight bit of chaos within our boards and within our town and it's caused problems. And if you all can't see it, you just look at Eric's resignation as number one on my list of things that I knew were coming that I didn't want to see ever happen to this town while I was sitting here. So I am telling you, we have problems. You know, and I'll go through it. We've lost our Department of Public Works director. We've, we've lost our maintainer, our best maintainer, our oldest maintainer. We are, we're gonna lose our treasurer, okay? We'll sit there and deal with that. And we have other positions within this town because of some of our chaos, self-induced, that we have to deal with. But really, we need to sit there and be really cognizant of the fact and work together as boards. Like one thing, you know, I participated in a Board of Education meeting and I understood that there is, there's freedom of information requests being positioned back and forth between departments within this town. That should never happen, ever. I was so disappointed when I found out that the treasurer sat there and gave the Board of Education a freedom of information request for information. I understand what the treasurer might be after, but submitting a freedom of information request against another board or a town group is not okay for me. And that the Board of Education in turn sent freedom of information requests to town is not okay for me. And so I am just telling you, I'm telling you all as boards, we either work together and share all of the information so that we can make good decisions or we're gonna have bigger problems. And I'm just letting everybody know, those big problems are coming. And one of the things, we have this disconnect on capital projects. And listen, I won't even go into that, I'll just sit there and tell you. Every board needs to understand what that board's responsibilities are. Every board, even my board, we need to sit there and take the time to understand what our responsibilities are. So we, we, we do play our roles, we respect the other groups, we do what they, they need to do, what they need to do and we need to do what we need to do. But every board has to understand where they're at. I look at my board as we are the group that sets the priorities for the town and we sit there and come up with a budget for capital projects and we come up with a budget to operate the town and do the basic work that the town needs to have done. We walk that budget to the Board of Finance. You guys determine if that budget is acceptable for what you can raise in taxes from the community. Right? You sit there and say, these things are good or these are bad. And we then take it back and we work within those parameters of what you're given. And Eric has done a phenomenal job of working within what the Board of Finance has provided us to provide levels of service that are acceptable for the community. But I will sit there and tell you, as long as we understand all of our roles, we'll all work together as easily as possible. And we should never, ever, if I hear of another freedom of information request coming back and forth, I will be so disheartened because that's not how we should work. Share the information and even if you get what you don't consider to be a reasonable answer. Maybe some board is unreasonable and they just, we all work with it. It's not, it's not a negative, they don't take it as a negative. But sharing information and understanding what we're after is really critical as this town moves forward. And it's really, you know, from a town's. And it's really, you know, from a town's perspective, Board of Selectment's perspective, I cannot tell you how upset I am at the changes that have occurred. And Eric, I do thank you for all you've done, for all the grants that you've sat there and got for this town, and all the work that you've done to try to sit there and make us better off than when we had the first selectmen sitting in this chair. And I thank you for not making me do it. Because I will tell you, and this is what everybody in this town needs to understand, there will be people coming and saying, let's change the charter again and get away from the town administrator. Do not do that.
That would be disaster.
It would be an absolute disaster.
It will be steps backwards like you cannot imagine.
People have built a new. You didn't even touch on it, but you know, we're gonna have to bring the board, chair, everybody's chair.
Listen, those are, that's a.
That's Board of Finance right there, too, so.
It takes so long to just get the knowledge, you know, that you learn. But Jeff, I like that you brought it forward, that you want to look at that position. I feel like Eric, in his role, had to do so much, you know, like, and I mean.
We are, we're too small to ask for, what I'm saying, they're saying, you're not gonna get multiple people in a position. You're gonna get one person. Well, what we have to decide is what type of person, where does the selectman will come to you? But I already know in my head, it's either, it's either we overpay, and we pay more and get more in a reasonable range. Because Eric, what were you in position? You've always, you've said this multiple times. What, how far down on the pecking order are you with town administrators, town managers?
I'm pretty sure I'm the lowest paid member in the state.
That is because the Board of Finance does a damn good job.
We negotiated, just, we negotiated.
Eric negotiated, it's bad. So we have a problem.
Yeah.
And just understand that the opportunities are raise the pay, unpay, you know, maybe reasonably close to what we're doing, and get a less qualified individual. And honestly, I will sit there and just tell you, it probably took you, what, two years to get good at it?
At least.
I don't know that I'm good at it.
No, you are very good. How long did it take you to get reasonably comfortable in the position?
A while, a couple of years.
Couple of years, to me, it was a couple of years.
Well, but remember, the first problem was, we had a Public Works that was disastrous. So I spent the first year essentially being the Public Works supervisor until we could get an actual Public Works supervisor. And that killed an enormous amount of time. You know, so that was a structural problem we had in the town. You know, and frankly, that occurred because at some point, the Board of Selectmen decided to get rid of the Public Works supervisor, back when there was a five to six-person Public Works department. And the only way they could do it without running the follow of the law was to eliminate the position. So they took the most senior Public Works employee at the time and said, you're now the supervisor. And that was, that was frankly, a disaster. He was a great guy, he worked his ever-loving butt off of the town, but he couldn't use a computer, he couldn't use a smartphone, he couldn't send texts, he couldn't use email. And that's who we had running Public Works for, you know, ten years. You know, and at the same time, the Board of Selectmen wasn't investing in equipment. So that killed a specific, once I had that off my plate and I had a Public Works supervisor in place that could run that, because that is the biggest single department and expense, you know, on the town side, then it was pretty quick. I just needed to free up the time.
That's what I meant about you doing too much. I think your knowledge is extensive of the town and like the land and like rules and, you know, then there's the management part and the financial part, and then the Public Works part. You were involved in all of that. So you probably brought it to the point where when you have those structures at the top, like Jeff says, like if you, how many people are in your Public Works department right now? I feel like the town has lost so many employees.
We're back up to, we're forward today, as of November third, we will have a new Public Works supervisor re-staffed.
Cause I know you probably have that, so you have that, but then you have the treasury finance side, you know? And then you overseeing it with your, yeah. But you're already in all the ground roots parts too, like on the roads.
I've sat here, just Eric tonight, like we have at every Board of Finance meeting, go through the administrative report. It's mind-boggling what this man knows and does, every week, the hours he puts in. People have no clue what we have compared to the old days. This man's knowledge, just what he reported to all of us tonight, you're in deep shit right now. That's what's important when he's gone, because it would take a long time to fill those shoes. I don't know if anybody gets that, but I've listened to what he's done, he reports that he gives it every Board of Finance meeting, and my head just spins that he knows and has a grasp of all of this, so.
Without notes.
Without notes, time and no work.
Usually without time.
But, but you know, people, you know, they've loved Eric or this, that, and if they didn't go along, they don't know what he does. You know, the hours that he puts in, some of these.
The other thing I'd like to chime in about with what Jeff was saying about, you know, how we pay the staff this position. We had a prior administrator, I don't know how many people were here, I was on the board.
Two years.
Yeah, it was, it was a while back now, people may have kind of forgotten, because probably it was in between and screwed up time. But that didn't work out, let's put it that way. And we didn't pay, we didn't pay a lot, and we got someone who frankly couldn't do the job. And we had to move on, and luckily, we flipped in there, but, you know.
No, we compromised, to be brutally honest, I don't know if you know it, Eric was elected to the Board of Selectmen. And we compromised because we, we as a board worked together to put what we thought was the best possible person into that position, understanding that he did not have the true qualifications that were even written into what we were doing to be the town administrator. But we understood his character and what he was bringing to us, and we, as a board, understood there would be room. So we have to understand that as a town. We could try to do it this way and go through growing pains again, re-go through what we did, and maybe not get the right result, or we could try to overcompensate, give additional compensation to that role, and try to get somebody with a better qual, not, not, not better than Eric, but more qualified than we.
You can get a better administrator than me, I have no doubt about that. I see in some of my peers capabilities that I don't have.
Do you have any recommendations, or are you gonna start recommending?
Yeah, but what he's gonna tell you next is how much money you have to pay to get.
Right, but you're not, you know, the, the town just has to understand that if you want that, you're going to have to pay for that. You know, and you're gonna have to search national. You know, the, the job I interviewed for in Dalton, I think there was only one out of the five interviewed candidates that were from Massachusetts. They did a nationwide search, they pulled people from plenty of states to make their decision. And that's what you have to do today. You, there is, there are too many, there are too few administrators, and there are too many positions open, and you're competing against all the other towns. And unlike Connecticut, most of the towns north of here, most of the cities, have town manager forms of government, even very small towns. I mean, Waterville, New Hampshire is a population of eight hundred and fifty. Their town manager makes quite a bit more than I make here. You know, you just gotta ante up if you're gonna be competitive in that particular market, or you have to try something unusual, which is what the board did with me. And maybe that'll work, maybe it won't.
This is an unusual town too, I have to say, from living in other towns, there's never been a town like this. With so many opinions, so many people getting involved, so much venom being spewed all over the place, people being not respected in meetings, people, so we all have, people talking things behind people's back when you think things are fine. I mean, there's a lot of ugliness in this town, let's be real. I hope they ante it up, and I understand what you want to run this town. There's not, there's also some real bad things that go on in this town that is so small.
I don't think.
It's so small, and it gets people that give of their time and their free will.
We are all volunteers.
Absolutely.
We're all volunteers, but a lot of volunteers like to throw stones. So you all have to understand that if you're going to be in this position.
I don't like negativity.
Yeah, well, you know, what I like is data and information. And if I can get the data and information, I as a business owner, and even though this is not a business, I can make a business decision. I can give you what is right for the community, right? It might not be right for a given department, and I respect that, and I can listen. You know, what I have a problem with really, and I will tell you, my managerial style? I let everybody go, you do what you want, right? I can handle bad news, you tell it to me to my face. And I can sit there, I can sit there and live with, with bad news. I cannot live with people lying. And I cannot live with people not giving me everything that they should be giving me. That's my, that is my, that is my end-all be-all in my work and my life. I can respect a bad, bad decision, I can respect that you made a mistake. Just tell me, be forthright, and don't make me go dig and do other things that I have to do. So in this town, we do like to throw stones, there's been a lot of back-channeling. Back-channeling causes chaos, chaos is in, karma is ensued.
I'm just.
No one listens, no one listens, no one listens.
I don't know how we get that.
Yeah, sorry, that was just, it needed to be said. I hope we're performing positivity.
Really, but, but I get where we're going, and I just think it's important that we work together, we're transparent, it has to happen.
Professional.
Not gonna believe this.
But let me be clear, I didn't believe the town is over because of the salary. I don't think the town is over because of the chaos.
And that has to be understood by the rest of the community.
Yeah, that's sad, I'm sorry to hear that.
That is very sad.
Okay, but I think we, I think we have shifted into board open discussion.
We did.
And any other topics that we should include that we have?
Well, talking about senior people, I think we have significantly underpaid our town clerk for many, many years. And that may eventually affect us as well. I know for a fact that there were many years when our town clerk went without any increase in pay. And I think that may have affected a decision there, I don't know. But I think we're, we're looking at it come up there as well, at some point, to have qualified people.
It's an elected position.
I know it's an elected position, we also have to pay, or we're not gonna be able to fill the position.
If it was appointed, I would a hundred percent agree with you, Shannon. But because it's an elected position, it has little different parameters. That's not to say we shouldn't try to pay a reasonable salary, but it is a difference. If we had gone through the charter revision, and we sit there and had to appoint a town clerk, I would tell you flat out, we'd have to be raising the compensation. No problem, but because it is an elected position, that's less of a problem.
It's less of a problem, but we lost an assistant clerk over that very reason.
No, we, we lost the assistant clerk, because she couldn't take the position.
No, another one, but never mind.
So, are you talking, wait, are you talking the assistant town clerk or the town clerk?
Assistant town clerk.
The assistant town clerk, oh, so you said the town clerk, so the assistant.
I said assistant, no, you said town clerk.
They said town clerk.
You said town clerk.
She said, oh.
I heard assistant.
Assistant was the second one. The second.
Our first time, I haven't got town clerk.
So we have raised that salary considerably.
Pardon?
I said, so we have raised that salary considerably.
Because this is, we have, finally, yeah.
They said they did, that the last meeting was, they said it was opt, yeah.
Any other board open discussion?
Relevant to the budget development process.
Please be, please be consistent with what your requests are for all the departments, and hold the town accountable to what you're asking them for and what you're requesting. And, and I am so sorry, and I am going to attend your meetings, you guys have to ask questions. If you don't ask questions of every board, of every group, and I will point to the Board of Education, don't ask questions of the Board of Education as to how there's, and they, they need to educate our children properly, but you have to ask questions, don't be mean, but ask questions. Okay, anything under correspondence? No correspondence. We move on to public speak, any, yes?
I'm gonna come over here so that I can be on the camera, I have a few things to say. See if I remember all these things, because I didn't take any notes. First, on the subject of the Board of Education and the accessibility of the meeting minutes that you talked about. Val, I heard what you said about maintaining the records and following the procedures, and I appreciate what, what you informed us on, but this is 2025 and not 1925. And the expectation is that, within a reasonable time period, those records are going to be scanned, electronic, and available online. Jeff, I think you need to decide how far back that needs to go in a reasonable certain, you brought it up.
Yeah, but it's not deep, there's, she is, right, there's rules that require.
Right, let me, let me just finish what I'm, what I'm thinking here. You have a requirement, you, that you need to go back a certain amount of time, you should define that. And then whether it's the Board of Selectmen, whether it's the Board of Ed, whether it's some volunteers that we appoint, we take those records and we digitize them and get them online, because that is the modern expectation for any public meetings, for any public records. Not that they sit in the filing cabinet somewhere, that they are available 24/7 electronically, just like every other meeting is. So that's, that's the first point that I, that I wanna make. The second, also having to do with the school, and this is just more for historical purposes and a little perspective. You've been here six years, I believe you said? And at one point, you talked about the population in the school and how it was a certain size, and we're never gonna see that size within our lifetime. When my son entered kindergarten in 2010, same year that Jeff's daughter entered, a year later after, after Shannon's son, there were about three hundred thirty kids in the school. The standard cohort was three classes in each grade. I think I remember there being one grade that had four classes. Seven years later, and there was no pre-K at the time, so this was all K through six. Seven years later, when Michael graduated in 2017, his was the last cohort of three classes. And we were down to somewhere around two hundred, two hundred ten, somewhere around there for, for the school population. The population hit its nadir, I think about six or seven years later, at about a hundred and seventy, if I remember right. And now we're back up to?
Two forty.
Two fifty.
Two fifty, is that including pre-K, or, okay, what is it without pre-K, just?
One zero. Three zero and one nine.
One nine.
One ninety, okay, so most of the growth that we've seen in that intervening time has been pre-K. It hasn't been through, yeah, okay. So I just wanna point out that this precipitous drop, fifty percent, happened in seven years or so. From three hundred thirty students down to below two hundred, okay? That, when it, when it hit, hit its bottom. So, or maybe a few years later, in a decade, okay? So it is altogether possible, I don't know what socioeconomic factors would take, but it could happen within our lifetime. So just, you know, if, if history has shown us anything, it's that we can't predict history. So comments about school. Now I wanna switch over to Eric for a moment.
You need to start wrapping it up.
Yeah, okay. I just wanna ask, and from the 10,000-foot level, when it comes to, to roads, let's stay out of the weeds, how long does a road last in this town? What's the operational lifetime for one being put down new to the time it needs to be wholesaling and repaved? Is it twenty years?
If you start with a good subbase and you pave two courses on the road, in other words, you start from like roughly twenty years before you're gonna do a major reconstruction, unless you're doing intermediate pavement preservation, which is the goal.
And thirty-four miles of roads, so if we were to just stretch it out linearly, we'd need to do a mile and a half of roads a year. Just in rough numbers.
Need to reconstruct.
Yeah, okay.
Yes.
And it's half a million dollars a mile.
Correct.
Okay, so you're talking three-quarters of a million dollars a year just to keep up with the road. Okay, so you're talking three quarters of a million dollars a year just to keep up with the roads.
But that's not including the preservation you'd be doing.
Yeah, okay.
The same.
Just pointing out, it's a lot of money. And it's a sustained, kind of predictable expense over decades. Okay, and last, again, well, this is board of selectmen, but pertaining to Eric. My understanding of how you replace somebody like him, at least the way that it's done, been done in the past, is that you empanel a committee within the town, a recruitment and hiring committee, and you go through the process. I've heard it mentioned by more than one person that that's something that can be outsourced to professionals, that there are professional recruiting organizations that's expensive, but it may be another approach for you guys to consider. So, and I think I've covered everything, Doug.
Any other public comments? Yes, Penny?
Oh my God, we're going to miss Eric.
This is all a little too late.
Any other public comments? And I had one, and I was expecting, you know, a lot of good information from Valerie on, on the school budget thing. What I didn't hear was capital improvements. And that's, maybe I missed it in there somewhere, but, you know, last year, we heard, we were looking for bathroom, elevator and pavement and driveway. And I didn't hear any of that in the discussion that night.
The elevator's been done during the course of this past year. The driveway was put off. So we are going to put it off again. As Eric mentioned, there's lots of road discussions that need to take place. So at one time, they discussed doing our driveway at the same time as the driveway down here. So, and then the bathroom was funded already, like a lot of the town projects, that money is sitting there. So that shouldn't, I'm glad you mentioned it. Jeff, that wouldn't be something that we would be adding in addition to our operational budget this year, moving forward as we see it, so.
But do we have, are we looking five years out?
We are. I did just receive, we talked about this at the board meeting this week. I did just receive the new capital template from Eric. Thanks for doing that before you left. And so I will continue to create the schools using the same template at our board meeting. I had presented the fact that I have started that with a couple of sub areas and it'll follow the same exact model as the one that we received this week from the town. So that, moving forward, the boards will have that and it'll be all inclusive, the towns and the schools.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome, Tim.
Any last minute public comments? Looking for a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Sorry, I'll send it. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.